Ready to go? Okay. Good evening. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the San Alina City Council for July 28, 2015. We began our meeting at 5:00. We met in closed session. We have no reportable items coming out of closed session, subject to check by the city attorney.
That's correct.
Next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Kroll, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Black.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes, here.
Councilmember Kroll.
Here.
Doring.
Here.
Pitts.
Here.
The next item on our agenda is public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us on matters not on our agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to speak at public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. I'm Chuck Vandre, and I live over on Star Avenue in San Alina. I would like to request that the city pull the consent item number 21, dealing with the additional funds to be proposed for the additional work on the EIR for the Hunter Project.
You don't need to comment further. Here, it will be pulled, and we'll have a public hearing with respect to it.
Tonight?
Tonight.
Okay.
Okay? That's the way it works.
Thank you.
The way it works on the consent items are that I go through them one by one, and any member of the public or any member of the council can pull the item, and if that happens, it just goes on to the regular, through the regular hearing process.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Any other public comment? That takes us to reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. Let me begin with the newly returned city manager. Any report?
Thank you very much. I don't have anything to report out. I'd just like to ask, thank Finance Director April Mitz for acting as acting city manager during my three-week absence while I was out of the country, and she did an exceptional job. It's not easy work, and did double duty, and I just want to thank her for that, and my team as well. Did a great job while I was gone, and so I just really appreciate the opportunity to be gone.
Okay. Very good. Welcome back. Ms. Mitz?
I'm the manager of the city.
You mean, the last three weeks haven't resulted in anything for you to report?
Okay, I can report. I'm very glad Jennifer is back. But thank you very much.
All right. Ms. Black?
Mr. Carnegie. Or Director Hosh?
I just wanted to let the public know that the Planning Department has put a list of the approved short-term rental permit locations on the website, along with a map. So that's available now on the planning webpage for public to view.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Any member of the city council? Mr. Pitts? Ms. Kroll?
No.
Mr. Doring?
I don't have anything to report, but I would like to have the council have a conversation about Adams Street, and, you know, what our game plan is there, and I would request that we can maybe put that on the, an agenda, just for a general discussion, you know, end of September, or something like that.
I believe that staff has that in mind, particularly focusing on the process that the city must go through in order to address applications for the Adams Street property. And so I believe that will happen in September.
Wow. I like that. Thank you.
Mr. White? And I have nothing as well. So, let's go to staff briefing. Ms. Tool.
So I have a very brief update on water conservation. So I'm going to walk you through some of the stuff that I'm currently working on. In June and July, we sent out potential leak notices, and so these are letters that were notifying any customer that has had continuous water usage in a 24-hour period. So it doesn't mean they actually have a leak. It means that it's a potential leak. Sometimes a faucet might have gotten left on overnight, but the system automatically generates these notices, and so we're actually making an effort to contact people, every customer that has a 24-hour usage of water. So in June, we sent about 284 first notices out, and in July, the first notices dropped to 124, and the second notices dropped to 151. And we got a lot of positive feedback. In June, we probably talked to about 30 customers, and in July, probably between 50 and 60 customers. Even one person noted, "We got the first notice, fixed the leak, got the second notice, had a second leak." So they are being effective, and it's something to help educate the community on what's actually happening, sometimes underground. So I'm also currently working on forming partnerships. So I met with the City of Napa, the County of Napa, and all the cities within Napa County, and we're working together to do some kind of big pushes with marketing and getting the word out for conservation efforts. I'm also looking to partner with the master gardeners to do a demonstration garden. We're looking at a few potential sites, but in front of Carnegie, maybe one of them. And then I'm also trying to go to several of the boards and committees and do updates also, as I'm doing at city council. So some of the questions I've gotten are how many residential customers and how many commercial customers. So this slide just illustrates out of the number of hookups. This is not usage. This is number of hookups. Eighty-eight percent are residential, and then 12 percent are commercial, and the 1% is raw water and, you know, the little tiny other category. So this is our water production. The dark blue line is 2013, and that's our baseline year that we're comparing to, and the light blue line is 2014, and then the green line is 2015, where we're currently at. And we've had a 27% reduction from June of 2013 to June of 2015. So we are currently on target, meeting that monthly reduction of 25%. You can also see that earlier in the year, we've had some ups and downs compared to the baseline, but overall, we are trending as a lower percentage than we did in 2013 currently. And I wanted to update on the Bell Canyon reservoir levels. So again, the 2013 is dark blue, and 2014 is light blue, and 2015 is green, the current year. And the reservoir levels are almost exactly the same as they were last year. But if you notice, if we continue on this trend, the reservoir did dip significantly later in the year. So some of the upcoming things that I'm working on, I'm looking at a policy for water code enforcement. It has been codified in the municipal code now, all the drought measures that we're taking. So now I'm creating a policy on how to actually do the code enforcement, how notices will be given, and when fines will be given. I'm evaluating both the clothes washer rebate program, and the toilet rebate program, and going to revamp those, and also evaluating a cash-for-grass program. I believe we can potentially get some funding from the City of Napa through Prop 84 for that program, and so just kind of looking at how to create that program. And then I'm also evaluating water conservation supplies, such as showerheads, hose nozzles, aerators, toilet leak tabs, and hoping to get some of those in stock to give to the community. And then I'm going to be here once a month. Does anyone have any questions, or would like to see additional information that I didn't cover?
Well, what I would say is that you've been with me at Farmer's Market. If you loaded up the table, we have to get a larger table with all of her supplies, and that will be a great educational opportunity for those who come to the Farmer's Market. Of course, everybody in the city should come to the Farmer's Market.
And I know that Mr. Vandre is still looking for trees and probably a demonstration project at his house. I just wanted to all hear that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If the gardens around City Hall could use some.
Yes.
Some grasses, maybe. Some bunch grasses.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation or informational overview is by Marin Clean Energy. And I think that's going to be Ms. Hang. Is she here? No? What happened here, Cindy?
I don't have, I don't have her contact information, but I just had email contact with her right before 5:00, confirming that she was going to be here and that I had the Let me go check outside real quick, just.
All right. We'll take a two-minute recess while you check outside.
We should have seen you all.
Maybe she got hung up in traffic somewhere.
Can just tune in.
He's two. His school is every summer.
Oh, wow.
His 16-year-old son, so why? And then somebody cut it two days before. And Emery's had All-Stars, so it was great. He was like a great one. He was just one of the guys. This is by Water Wheel Farms, I call it.
All right. Well, why don't we go through the consent calendar while we're waiting, and at least find out what is, remains on consent, and what does not remain on consent, and then we can go back to that. So consent items. Item 10, which is consideration and proposed approval, regular and special meeting minutes of various city council meetings beginning November 25, 2014, through February 24, 2015. 11, consideration and proposed approving, and proposed approving First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Coastal Civil Engineering, Inc., in the amount of $10,000 for planned review engineering services for a total amount not to exceed $20,000. And again, any member of the council or any member of the public can pull any of these items. Item 12, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution finding exemption from SEQA, approving and adopting the project manual, and authorizing the bid request for Charter Oak Avenue and Highway 29 sewer repair project from capital improvement project S16 miscellaneous maintenance projects. 13, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution setting a hearing to approve annexation of territory into the San Alina Municipal Sewer District Number 1 MSD Annexation Number 118609 McCorkle Avenue. 14, consideration and proposed approving Second Amendment to agreement for consultant services with Consolidated City CM, which must be Construction Manager, for construction management and inspection services in the amount of $6,775, for a total contract amount of $360,331.70 for Water Tank 1A Construction Project W83. 15, consideration and proposed resolution approving extension of license agreement number 14WBR0004N between the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration Office of Atmospheric Research and the City of San Alina for the placement of precipitation radar and gauge at the Lewa Strala Water Treatment Plant. 16, consideration and proposed approval of a resolution authorizing piggyback purchase from Wondry's Fleet Group through State of California Department of General Service Procurement Division Contract statewide commodity contract number 1-14-23-20A-G for purchase of two 2015 Ford F-250 extended cab replacement trucks for the Public Works Department for a total amount not to exceed $49,119.66. The greatest bargain on this agenda. 17, consideration and proposed resolution authorizing piggyback purchase from RDO Equipment Company through National Joint Powers Alliance for purchase of a new 12-inch brush chipper for the Public Works Department for an amount not to exceed $42,333.46. 18, consideration and proposed approval of a professional services agreement with Pinya Vineyard Management in the amount of $13,200 for the disking of the wastewater treatment and reclamation plants, effluent disposal, irrigation spray fields.
I'd like to pull that one for clarification.
All right. 19, consideration and proposed resolution authorizing a 60-month lease agreement between the City of San Alina and Xerox for a new copy machine at the Fire Department for a total cost of $12,235.20. 20, consideration to designate Mayor Allen Galbraith as the 2015 League of California Cities Annual Conference Voting Delegate. Am I recused from that one, Mr. Brown?
No, you're not.
Okay. 21 has been pulled. 22, consideration and proposed resolution finding an exemption from SEQA for the 2015 pavement rehabilitation project, approving and adopting the project manual, and authorizing the bid request, request for 2015 pavement rehabilitation project for designated streets. So, hearing that no one is pulling the following consent items, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with respect to items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, 20, and 22.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Black.
Councilmember Doring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll.
Yes.
Pitts.
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yes. And now, are we set to go with respect to the Marin Clean Energy?
No.
Five minutes away.
Five minutes away. All right. Then we, let's take up number 18, and these are items, this is an item of Mr. Palmer, who is not here tonight, but I understand that Ms. Mitz is ready to pinch-hit.
Again, I don't need a full-blown staff report. I just noticed that the resolution price does not match the contract price. On the last page of the, I should have brought this to you earlier, but I didn't have a chance to do that. On the last page of the contract, it's a $1,200 difference, or $1,300 difference. The very last page of the professional services contract has a contingency fee added into it. So that would go over the resolution amount, and I don't know what that contingency is or why there's a difference, but it shouldn't be a difference. There should be one price.
You know, this is, this is the first time that I actually saw the contract, so I can't, I can't answer for what the difference is. If you'd like, we can, we can have this carryover to the next meeting, and Steve could answer that.
Is there any time of the essence issue here with respect to this item?
No. He, he just wanted to start getting things moving, and unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, and so instead of pulling all of his items, he wanted to put him out there for consideration. So I don't think that there's any time.
You know, it's $1,300. I, you know, people have a different notion of what a 10% contingency is. In my business, I look at that as something that maybe someone else would look differently, but it's beyond the resolution, and I'm not sure we need to look at it again. I just need to have that clarified at some point, say, "No, you don't get that," or whatever the negotiated deal is we should stick with.
So if he can work within the resolution amount, then we're good.
That's what I would recommend.
If not, he comes back, we amend it and...
Yeah. All right.
That's what I would recommend.
That's fine.
Exactly.
Then the chair will entertain a motion to approve 18, with the understanding that if Mr. Palmer needs to come back for a further amendment, he'll do so.
Sorry. Steve actually, he must be watching.
Oh.
So he actually just sent me a message saying no contingency is needed.
No contingency is needed? Okay, then it's...
So we're all set to approve it?
So I move to approve.
For the resolution.
Okay. Good catch there, Mr. Doring. Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White.
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll.
Yes.
Pitts.
Yes.
Doring.
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yes. That takes us to item 21, consideration and proposed resolution for a contract amendment increasing the current contract amount with Urban Planning Partners by $52,320 to a new total of $140,009.10. Update the environmental impact report previously prepared for the proposed Hunter Project, which consists of a subdivision application for 51 single-family residential lots and a 3.4-acre parcel for multiple-family site. The entire cost of this work is the responsibility of the Hunter Project proponent, not the city. So let's start with Mr. Carnegie, staff report.
Yes, Mayor. Members of the council, let me just kind of give a quick overview here. As indicated, this is a contract amendment for, an amendment to an EIR that's been underway for some time. More specifically, council last saw this in February of this year. That previous contract amount was $88,590. What you have before you tonight is an amendment to that, an increase of approximately $52,000 to bring the new total to $140,910. The need for the additional work involved over what council saw back in February primarily involves traffic analysis. When the consultant was doing some preliminary work under the work authorized in February, it became clear that some of the, essentially all of the underlying traffic counts, some of which dated back to 2011 and 2012, needed to be updated. So that's a big part, or part of the work. In doing that, then the entire model needs to be recalibrated, et cetera, and that drives the additional traffic analysis cost. Then there's also an increment to the overall consultant working on the project, and there's a number of things involved in that, primarily to do some refinement of the comments to the previous final EIR. There were some concerns expressed back when the FEIR was drafted, that some of the comments didn't adequately respond to issues, so some money's been included to essentially amplify in those earlier comments that were provided. As just, as noted, the cost of work is being paid for by Hunter. Staff did have a chance to discuss the proposed scope and added costs with the applicant, and the applicants in concurrence with both the scope and the costs. And there's also, as noted in the scope of work, a schedule update essentially based on this latest work scope. The updated draft EIR is scheduled to be completed on September 22 of this year. I'd also like to note that Lynette Diaz, who's the principal from the consulting firm doing this work, Urban Planning Partners, is in attendance here tonight, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any preliminary questions from members of the council before we open the public hearing? All right. Let me open the public hearing. Mr. Vandre? Mr. Milliken?
Thanks, Victor. The last time I was up here was in February, asking...
You want to start with your name and address?
John Milliken, 1256 Hudson Avenue, San Alina, California. Last time I was up here was in February, asking an item be pulled from the consent agenda to talk about continuing on with additional analysis at Urban Planning Partners. October 2011, UPP was first awarded the contract to begin work on the EIR. Eight months later, May 2012, the entire DIR is completed and released and circulated for comment. This comment period marks the last official opportunity for the public to weigh in on the adequacy of the EIR. Nine months later, January 2013, requests for more funding to handle significant volumes of comments. Volume of comments are an early indicator of how inadequate the analysis of the first DEIR was. Fifteen months after the circulation of the DEIR, September 2013, response to comments is finished. The FEIR is released. After collecting hundreds of pages of comments, absolutely no changes and identified significant impacts or proposed mitigations are offered in the FEIR. The same three significant impacts that were identified in the DEIR are duplicated in the FEIR. A few months later, October 2013, applicant is allowed to withdraw the FEIR prior to his scheduled hearing by the Planning Commission in order to allow additional traffic and other analysis to be performed in relation to the three identified significant impacts. The public has no opportunity to comment on the inadequacies of the FEIR. The public has never been informed exactly what additional analyses are to be performed. It has no opportunity to comment on the scope of these analyses. Twelve months later, October 2014, Jerry Haig contract is up for $25,000 more extension. Five months after that was last February, February 2015, the council approved $88,000, and work is scheduled to be completed in six weeks. Five months later, today, 20 weeks, we learn that, that the EIR is going to be continued until September. So we're almost four years into this process right now, and I have a few questions. Basically, what assurances do we have that the quality of the data collection and the SEQA analysis done for the new DIR, we call it a DEIR2, will be of better standards than the first one that was done? We've gone down this road at Urban Planning Partners before, and here we are, four years into the process, and we seem to be doing it again. And I think there's a tendency to say, "Well, Hunter's paying for it. Let's just keep doing it." But I'm talking about furthering the contract and the quality of the product that we're actually seeing. The second thing I'm worried about is, will there ever be a forum for the public to weigh in on the inadequacies of the first FEIR? And local citizens put a lot of effort into commenting and studying that, and we've never been allowed to comment on the FEIR. It's just been kicked down the road when the applicant was allowed to, to pull the thing. And finally, what's to prevent the applicant from withdrawing the new FEIR if they, once again, are not happy with the conclusions of the new document? In other words, how long and how many times can the applicant keep moving the goalposts for completion of the EIR? Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Chuck Vandre, 1176 Star Avenue. I'd like to supplement the previous speaker. I've got some serious questions. In my opinion, traffic's obviously a huge issue, but there's a serious flaw in the formula that was used to compute traffic in the first place, and I'd like to make sure that if this does go forward with these folks, that they get coached to use a model that I'd like to propose. The way that the original traffic analysis was done was to measure traffic, estimate how many new cars would be coming and going based upon the new development, and that's the increase in traffic. There's a fatal flaw in that. What that doesn't include is the hundreds of cars that are going to use that Star Avenue, Pope Avenue hunt as a cut-through. People that already live in town that aren't going to be part of this new development are going to increase traffic dramatically, not because they live in the new development, because now there's a quicker way to get to the trail, or we're going to shave 30 seconds off someone's trip to the library. That has not been accounted for, and I can offer some proof as to how this could be adequately measured. Back when the Meadow Creek development was done, there must have been a traffic study done at that point. So there's some metrics that say, "This is what we anticipated traffic to go up as a result of this Meadow Creek development." Talking to neighbors, what they tell me is it's drastically more than was ever anticipated due to the cut-through traffic. So what I would propose, take the original baseline that was used, go back and look at what that traffic is today, and develop a multiplier to say, whatever they come back with and say, "This is the additional traffic," use the multiplier that we'll call the cut-through multiplier, which will then more accurately depict what I think the traffic impact will be. So that's my suggestion, and I'd also like to take the few seconds I've got left to state that some neighbors and I pointed up a good amount of money and hired one of the top SEQA attorneys in California. These guys are lights-out good. They're being, had Page 1 of the Chronicle and other cases they're doing. These folks went through the DEIR and came up with three code violations, 27 SEQA violations. Not one of these was accurately and adequately addressed in the FEIR, and I had a previous conversation with the city staffer who's no longer here, saying, "You mean my crack-a-jack attorney, tops in his field, was wrong 31 times? Every single item was wrong?" I honestly don't believe that. So I would like to further the previous speaker's request that we have a chance, my attorney wants to have a chance, he's dealt with the city before, to come back and revisit what we consider serious deficiencies in the original EIR that were never addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further public comment? Let me close the public comment. Let me turn first to Mr. Carnegie for any further elucidation here.
Sure. And if I'm...
These folks went through the DEIR and came up with three code violations, twenty-seven sequo violations. Not one of these was accurately and adequately addressed in the FEIR, and I had a previous conversation with the city staffer who's no longer here, saying, you mean my crack-a-jack attorney, tops in his field, was wrong thirty-one times? Every single item was wrong? I honestly don't believe that. So, I would like to further the previous speaker's request that we have a chance, my attorney wants to have a chance, he's dealt with the city before, to come back and revisit what we consider serious deficiencies in the original EIR that were never addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any further public comment? Let me close the public comment. Let me turn first to Mr. Carniglia for any further elucidation here.
Sure, and if I miss an item that was raised, please, you know, prompt me. In terms of the, let me just quickly respond to some of the items raised, and Lynette too can join in as appropriate, maybe if Lynette, you want to step to the podium. Kind of starting at the back end in terms of the most recent comment received here tonight in terms of traffic, as indicated, it's not appropriate simply to look at the project and layer that onto existing. As part of a traffic analysis, you need to look at what's called cumulative traffic, and the consultant doing this traffic analysis is OmniMeans, and they are most definitely looking at a cumulative analysis. That data, in terms of coming up with the cumulative traffic generated, is generated by the county transportation model. So, it's the most up-to-date, accurate projections they are, there are in terms of future traffic patterns, and should definitely quantify the issue of cut-through traffic, so that will be covered. The question, interesting one, of how often could the applicant withdraw an EIR? I mean, and I'll defer to Tom on this, I mean, my presumption is really that it's, the applicant can indicate that they would like to withdraw, but unless, my understanding is unless they withdraw the entire application, that the city has the option of continuing to move forward on the project itself that's currently before the city. On the issue of the ability to comment on the revised environmental document that's going to be, that is being generated as part of this analysis, that revolves around the issue of recirculation, and there are various triggers in sequel law that speak to when recirculation is necessary, and those relate to a number of items. I won't, it's not appropriate really to get into all the details of that, but the short answer is essentially, once this work is done, so in September twenty-second, when we have this updated document in front of us, then city staff will sit down with legal counsel and look at this question of recirculation. So, really, it's a legal and procedural question. Without having the updated document in front of us or generated, it's not possible at this point to say it will or it won't be recirculated. As far as kind of the more global comment about simply the quality of the responses in terms of the previous FEIR, as noted, part of the scope of this work is to go in and, correct sense of the past, I think is too strong of a word, but essentially, look at some of those previous comments and provide some updates and more flesh on the bones in terms of the comments that were received and responded to as part of the previous FEIR process. That's part of the scope. Lynette, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm happy to answer any specific questions that the council would like me to answer and happy to provide some information on our qualifications. I know that is a subject of, you know, concern, and I guess I will add one thing, is that I think the experience the city is having with this document is common of a controversial project. You know, independent of the quality of the document. When it's controversial, you get a lot of comment letters, and it's a challenging situation, but one I've been in many, many times, because I tend to work on very controversial projects. So, I don't know if that helps. Like I said, I'm very willing to answer any specific questions you have.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I might just add on, supplement to what Mr. Carniglia said, the public, irrespective of whether the decision is ultimately made to recirculate the EIR based on the new environmental review that's taking place right now, irrespective of that, even if there is no formal recirculation of a new draft EIR, the public will have an opportunity to comment on the final EIR in the context of the decision-making on the ultimate project. In other words, the project can't come up for a decision before the planning commission and ultimately the city council are required to make a decision about certifying the EIR as adequate under sequo. So, of course, the public will have an opportunity at that time to weigh in on the adequacy of the final document. And again, no decision has been made as to whether, based on the additional environmental review that's being undertaken right now, the entire DEIR, draft EIR will be recirculated or a portion of it will be recirculated. That decision will be made, but I just want to assure the public that there will be a meaningful opportunity to comment on the final EIR before any decision is made to approve or deny the project.
All right. Any further discussion from council?
One additional question, so who makes the decision as to whether or not it'll be recirculated before we get to the final?
I believe it's the staff decision, you know, to make that, whether that's appealable up the chain of command, but it really is more of a technical legal issue.
So, on September twenty-second, we're going to be presented with an FEIR or a DEIR?
That's a good question, and it's going to depend really what, whether we're recirculating or not in terms of what it's called. I mean, it's really going to depend on that question.
So, I think, because I think that's one of the public's concerns, biggest concern, and it's concern for me too, so because they didn't have a chance to comment on the prior DEIR.
Right.
So, could we make it such that this is going to be a DEIR, such that the public, we can circulate it and the public can make comments on it? Because it seems like that's what is concerning others, and we want to have, we want to have as much input as we can.
If I might weigh in, there are legal standards under sequo that determine whether a recirculation is required, and ultimately, that decision is made in the first instance at the staff level. I think that that is an appealable determination that could come to the planning commission, but it is premature to make that decision this evening, and it's also beyond the scope of what's agendized before the council this evening. That decision as to whether, based on the additional environmental review that's being done, whether recirculation will be required under sequo, and there is pretty well-settled law under sequo as to when recirculation is required, and I can assure you that we'll be looking very closely at those standards, and if recirculation is required, that will be the advice that will be given.
But if it's not required, it still can be recirculated, right?
Yeah.
It's at the discretion of the staff?
I actually would like to review that to see if that's the case. That would be very unusual to recirculate when it's not legally required.
But keep in mind the comment that, at the point where it's certified, there will be a public hearing before the planning commission and ultimately a public hearing before us as well. So, any further comments from council? All right. At this point, the chair would entertain a motion to approve item twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll make it. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Jeez.
Second.
All right. Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Doring?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes, okay. Thank you very much. That takes us to the presentation by Marin Clean Energy. Welcome. Did you have to fight your way through some traffic?
I did.
Well, we apologize for that.
My apologies for being late.
And so, you are Ms. Allison Hang?
Yes.
Very good. So, why don't you proceed with your presentation? All our ears are focused on you.
Well, good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Allison Hang, Community Development Manager, down. Yeah? Community Development Manager with MCE, Marin Clean Energy, and I'm here to give you an overview of the MCE program in which the county of Napa enrolled this past February to give residents and businesses a choice in where their energy comes from. So, MCE is a community choice aggregator or CCA. CCAs have operated successfully in Illinois and the Northeast for decades now, and the legislation that made it possible in California, Assembly Bill one-seventeen, was passed in two thousand and two. CCA enables communities to aggregate or pool their electricity demand in order to purchase power on behalf of their residents, businesses, and municipal accounts. So, MCE as a CCA, lots of acronyms here, we provide generation options for our member communities. We buy and we build a cleaner electricity supply, and the investor-owned utility, in this case PG&E, provides transmission, delivery, and billing services just like they always have. So, using this partnership, we're able to offer all sorts of customers a choice in the source of their electricity. Communities can form CCAs for a variety of reasons. For MCE, these are the four driving factors behind our CCA. To use more renewable power in order to reduce the greenhouse gases that are produced by the creation of electricity. So, we try to get as much renewable power as possible into our generation mix while still maintaining low-stable rates. Because stable rates are important to us, we set rates once per year in April, and we try to set them below PG&E's rates. Respond to community needs. Because we're a community-based agency in every aspect of our operations, from power sources to rates to energy efficiency programs, even outreach in new communities, we actively seek and incorporate local feedback, and then local control and governance. With MCE, communities have a choice in where their power comes from and how much they pay for that. MCE is a not-for-profit public power agency. We are governed by a board of supervisors, or sorry, we're governed by a board of elected officials, one from our each-member town, city, and county. So, for example, Supervisor Brad Wagonconnect represents Napa County on our board. And because we're a public agency, all of our board meetings are public, including meetings where we set rates for electricity, but we don't use taxpayer funds. We're completely funded by ratepayer revenue. Just like PG&E, we report to the California Public Utilities Commission and the California Energy Commission, so we do have public, we have oversight of our operations. We formed in two thousand and eight, started serving customers in two thousand and ten, and we currently serve about eighty percent of electricity customers in our service area, which includes Marin County, Richmond, unincorporated Napa County, Benicia, El Cerrito, and San Pablo. So, customers in MCE's service area have choices, and that's key for us. Customers actually have four choices. PG&E's generation mix, which is twenty-seven percent renewable, MCE's light-green service, which is about fifty-six percent renewable, MCE's deep-green service is a hundred percent renewable. It's only a penny more per kilowatt hour than MCE's light-green. That's about five dollars more for the typical home. Half of that money goes into buying the extra renewable energy, the other half goes into local renewable development funds. So, we're actually using that fund right now to build a ten-megawatt solar facility in Richmond. And then finally, local sole is a new option that we're offering this year. It is a one-hundred percent local solar option, so all of the power for that product will come from a small solar facility that's being built right now for MCE customers in Nevada, in Marin County. That will be about thirty percent more than deep-green cost-wise, because it's a local development and that's more expensive, but the rate will be fixed for twenty years. So, just to give you a sense of how these options stack up price-wise, the four columns show the four generation options, and the rows show the different components of the electricity bill. So, the first row is electric delivery, regardless of which generation option you choose, that is provided by PG&E, and it costs exactly the same. The second item, electric generation, is what varies. So, light-green is the least expensive, deep-green is that penny more per kilowatt hour, and local sole is the fixed twenty-year rate. PG&E also charges MCE customers additional fees. Those are approved by the California Public Utilities Commission, and we always include them in our cost comparisons, since it's part of the bottom-line cost for our customers. So, looking at the bottom line there is the total, light-green is the least expensive option for folks. It's about a dollar less than PG&E. Deep-green is a few dollars more per month, and local sole reflects that premium of local development. It's also really important to note that customers that have CARE, FARA, or medical baseline discounts still get the same discounts with MCE. So, this slide shows the typical annual savings for a customer on MCE's light-green. It's about seventeen dollars for a home, a hundred and thirty dollars for a small business. Rates do change regularly. MCE sets our rates once per year, like I mentioned earlier. PG&E tends to set their rates three to five times per year. We don't guarantee that we'll always be less expensive than PG&E, because they could lower their rates, but for about half the time we've been serving customers, we have been less expensive. In two thousand and fourteen, we saved customers about five-point-nine million dollars in Marin and Richmond, and this year, we estimate to save customers about ten-point-six million in our service area. And this is especially great for our local governments and our school districts that save tens of thousands of dollars with MCE while reducing their greenhouse gas emissions. So, for example, the city of San Rafael in two thousand and fourteen saved about forty-seven thousand dollars and reduced a hundred and eighty-seven tons of greenhouse gases. This map shows our power sources. Simply by redirecting power that people are already buying to more renewable sources, we've been able to reduce over fifty-nine thousand tons of greenhouse gases, and that's really the goal of MCE. You can see here that we have power sources in California and Oregon and Washington. All of our long-term contracts are for California-based renewables, because we want to support renewables in California as much as possible. And also, by increasing the demand for renewable energy, we're contributing to the construction of new California renewable energy. So, our new California renewable energy projects already produce enough electricity for about eighty-five thousand homes per year. This map is one of our favorite that we're most proud of, because it shows renewable energy developments that are being constructed right now in our service area. So, MCE has a feed-in tariff program where we guarantee to buy electricity from new small renewable energy developments at above-market rates. So, that encourages local businesses and local organizations to develop renewable energy projects, creating local jobs and new local sources of revenue. In this program, we are developing ten projects right now in Marin and Richmond that will produce enough power for about ten-thousand-four-hundred homes a year, and we're working closely with our new communities to try to develop projects there as well. And because being responsive to community needs is part of our mission, we also have a number of local programs that we offer, and we tailor to our local communities. So, for example, we offer energy efficiency programs that are funded through the same sources PG&E, the public-purpose charge. We partnered with Tesla to create a battery storage pilot program. We support electric vehicle charging stations, and we have a generous net energy metering program for solar customers that I'm happy to talk more about if you're interested in the details of that. But all of this is just in addition in the details of that. But all of this is just in addition to what PG&E offers. We don't take away anything. We only expand opportunities. So how does the, the switch happen? State law requires public power agencies like MCE to be the default provider in our member communities. So when a community joins, we, we set an enrollment month. And on that enrollment month, accounts are automatically transferred over to MCE's light green, less expensive, more renewable service unless they opt out. Because of this opt-out aspect, we do extensive outreach around the enrollment date. State law requires that we send four enrollment notices. We send five for good measure. We also partner with community groups, host informational meetings, table out events, and advertise because we want to make sure people understand the program and how the enrollment works. So in that whole enrollment period, it lasts from about 60 days before the enrollment month to about 60 days after the enrollment month. You can see in the example here, about two months before May, two months after May. Customers can opt out at any time for free, and customers that opt out can return to MCE at any time with no restrictions. After that enrollment period, people can still opt out at any time. It's just a one-time $5 fee for residential accounts, one, one-time $25 fee for commercial accounts. And PG&E prevents you from returning to MCE service at that point for a year. So the options are always there. That's what this is about, is having a choice. It's just a little bit different in the enrollment period and afterwards. In Napa County, we had a really a very high enrollment rate. We had about 91% of folks who chose to remain with MCE. It's one of the highest in our service area. And we saw a really high adoption of our deep green product. Over 170 residents and businesses chose that, including folks like Honegwinery and Oberris de Soleil. So it was a great enrollment there. That is my, my brief overview of the program, and I am happy to talk more about any specific element or answer any of your questions. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of council at this point?
Can you talk about the generous battery program?
The generous net energy metering or the battery program?
Both.
Both? Okay. So the, the battery program is something that we developed with Tesla for Marin Community College. They have a very high demand charge. When you're a big company, you get charged more for how much electricity you're using at one time rather than how much electricity you use in general. So they have this high demand charge. And using a battery could help them regulate that. So we worked with Tesla and the community college to get them a battery so that they can regulate their demand charges, save a lot of money, and Tesla and the community college are splitting that savings. So that was a pilot project that we undertook. We're also working with Tesla to get residential customers batteries that they're offering. And we're developing a battery rate for those customers so that they can have some savings for installing a battery in their home. But it's just a couple examples of the, the programs that we do.
Can that battery be hooked up if you have your own solar panels to, to store your, your solar energy? I know there was some issue with that with PG&E trying to block the ability for individual homeowners to actually store their own energy, and the batteries are expensive and so on and so forth. Is that technology we're seeing coming now?
Yeah, that's, that's what the Tesla battery is. Well, it's designed to be that for people who want to kind of live off the grid or be energy independent, that would offer that. And, and that is a possibility now.
What does one of those batteries cost?
About $3,500 for the batteries. But it's all kind of preliminary at this stage. We'll, we'll have more information when that comes out. But your second question about the solar is, is an exciting one to answer because we offer, we do offer a very generous program. What we do is most companies will charge you at their retail rates if you use more electricity than you produce with solar, and credit you at their retail rates if you produce more electricity than you use. So it's like a one-to-one ratio. With MCE, we charge you at our retail rates, but we credit you at our retail rate plus a penny, which really adds up over the year. It's because we want to offer that extra incentive to solar customers. We also never zero out credits. So if you are able to work with your solar so that you have, even if you don't use as much electricity if you, as you produce, if you can get a negative credit at the end of the year by using electricity at the right time and producing electricity at the right time, PG&E, for example, zeroes out that credit. But MCE lets you keep that credit and it never expires. And then the third big bonus with MCE is that if that credit exceeds $100, we'll write you a check for the full retail amount. And I, I don't know of any other, except for Sonoma Clean Power, that would give you a check for the full retail amount.
And when can I opt in?
So this is only for...
It's not a question of opting in, it's not opting out.
Not opt out, yeah.
So, so this is only available now for unincorporated Napa County?
That's correct. It's by jurisdictional bodies. So since the, the Napa County supervisor has voted, the unincorporated area wasn't included.
And we are not included?
Not, not...
And we could, we could, we could adopt that if we would like?
Well, I think, I, I think the answer is that if we adopted, the other cities in Napa County need to adopt it at the same time. Am I right about this?
Well, you don't have to. But I know that Sustainable Napa County has been kind of working to coordinate because if all the cities join at the same time, there are advantages in that you could share the feasibility study that's required for membership.
Right, that's the issue. Okay.
Yeah.
That's the issue. It's, it's, it's efficient for all the cities to join at the same time and follow the lead of Napa County.
And what's the pace of the other three cities right now? Is there, I mean, I look at our, our agenda here, and the, the goal here is to give direction to staff to send a non-binding letter of interest. Have you received similar letters of interest from Napa, Calistoga, and Yountville?
We have, we are on the agenda for those city councils with the same direction in mind after the presentation. We have, yeah, we have it on the agenda for all the city councils. We gave a presentation at Calistoga a few months ago, I want to say, and I think they're bringing it back to the city council on August 4th for a letter. But I'd have to check with the agendas and what they end up having.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. All things being equal, as, as you expand MCE and you take on more customers, are the rates expected to go down for each individual customer just because of volume?
I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors to the rates, but in general, yes, there are economies of scale where we have a bigger, bigger service area, more customers. We are able to expect savings for customers.
And with respect to governance, it appears that today you have a 17-member board?
Mm-hmm.
And so when you start taking on other jurisdictions, that board gets bigger and bigger?
It does, yes. So for each new community, we add one new board member. If we expanded to a certain size, it'd be something that, that we'd have to consider about how to do the board, but, but that's how we've done it so far.
But each community would send its own representative?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm grappling with the notion of, of your California-wide energy generation and, and what you consider local. Tell me what local means in, in your vernacular.
When I speak, when I use the term local, I, I'm referring to our service area primarily, which includes now a pretty large area, but Marin, Richmond, Napa, unincorporated, El Cerrito, Benicia, and San Pablo. And then other than that, we try to get as Bay Area in our procurement as possible, and then also California-wide. But the, sometimes with the more local development, there is a cost increase. So we try to balance as much local as possible with as much renewable energy as possible. Does that answer your question with the...
Yeah, I think so. I, I understand the need to go beyond the, the local jurisdiction. But isn't there an intent to keep things local? I mean, isn't that part of the program?
Mm-hmm.
Yet you're fighting against that, right, because of cost? And developing, when you're developing new programs, they're going to be more expensive early on typically, or no?
Well, we always try to combine renewable energy, getting as much as we can with the local. So for example, in our deep green product, that, the renewable energy for that comes from a brighter, a wider geographic area. So Oregon and Washington contributes to that because it's less expensive and it's a less expensive renewable energy product. But we use half of that extra money to develop in local, and by that I mean our service area development. So we always try to partner development in our service area with as much renewable energy as we can at a good price point, if that example gives you...
And just talk generally about the similarities and differences with your group and the Sonoma group. Just in general, can you describe both, both programs?
Our programs are very similar. We worked with them to develop, and we love to work with new community choice aggregators because we love to have more similar organizations in the state. So it's very similar. The main differences would be where specifically we buy our energy from. We share some of the same sources, like the Geysers. We both buy from the Geysers, but I think that they buy a little bit more geothermal from the Geysers than we do. So it's really just the makeup of our, our power content would be the big difference there.
With respect to rate increases or rate stability, are they pretty much the same?
Us and Sonoma Clean Power?
Correct.
They just finished enrolling the whole area this year, so there, it's much newer to compare to, but we're both lower than PG&E right now and have been since Sonoma has been offering service.
How about customer comparison? How many customers do they have versus MCE?
They actually have a few more customers than MCE because Sonoma is more densely populated. And I don't know exactly how many customers they have, but it is a little bit higher than, than our customer base.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just one question, since we have solar panels on our house. Do you find that most customers with solar panels do not opt out? In other words, they stay with you and do not opt out for PG&E?
Yes, I do find that. The only issue is that the timing can be important for solar accounts. Because sometimes, since PG&E does not credit you, does not write you a check for your credits, if you enrolled with MCE when you had credits on your account, you wouldn't get any, you wouldn't get any value for that. You wouldn't get compensated for it. So sometimes we recommend for people to opt out, wait a couple months until your true-up happens, and then enroll with MCE so that you can get the full value for the credits you've built up with PG&E. That's the only, the only issue that I've sometimes seen with solar customers. But in general, after they use up their credits, they want to enroll with MCE because it provides a better financial compensation usually.
All right. Very good. In other words, you're going to make me try and understand that PG&E bill.
That's right. We're, we're happy to do analyses for people so that they can see when is the best time for them to switch over because we don't want anyone to lose credit. We're all about giving people as much credit as they can get for their solar. So we want to make sure that people don't lose that.
All right. Any further questions?
I have one more. Have you identified any local build sites within Napa County that are being pursued for local solar generation or, and/or other, other sources of generation?
Oh, good question.
We, we are working on that, but we haven't identified one particularly that I could share at this moment.
Have you worked at all with the Clover Flat Resource Recovery Center? They're generating some...
Yeah. Yeah, we, and I, we've talked to them. We can't disclose any particular customer decisions that they've made, but, but I have talked to the people at the Clover Flat landfill.
Okay.
Are you going to open it for public comment?
Oh.
Maybe some folks in the audience, I don't know.
Probably a very good idea. Is there any public comment at this point?
I see Gopal.
Yeah.
All right.
Gopal Shankar 1370 Albonita, Santa Lina. I have a lot to say, but I, I won't say any more than I support the program. But if they have questions about technical stuff, anything, you can shoot. But I'm in support.
All right. Why don't you dictate your email where you would like any questions asked under the record? Okay. I'm sure that will make it into the minutes.
Yes.
You said a D after the R.
Well... All right. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'll close the public hearing. And if there's, is there any further council discussion before I invite direction to staff? Then I would ask for a motion to give direction to staff to send a non-binding letter of interest to MCE.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Black.
Well, it's in the, it's in the, it's in the, it's on the agenda. So I'm going to stick my neck out and say this is appropriate under the Brown Act.
And I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
Okay. Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. And I think with that, that concludes our meeting. Am I missing anything at this point? Thank you very much, everybody. Thanks for coming.